Good evening. Welcome to the June 25, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and is recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So we wanted to start the meeting off with an executive session. So I just need a roll call, a motion and a roll call vote for us to enter into executive session.
I move we enter into executive session?
For the purposes of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the purposes of discussing collective bargaining agreements.
For?
For the transportation.
For the transportation workers.
Great.
Second?
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah, aye. We're entering into executive session. Thank you. Welcome back. We just finished our executive session and we're going to move along the agenda to the open public comment. We are a few minutes early out of executive session, but we are going to start that right now. And I believe there are two names on the list. Can you just... Ms. Kim? Okay. There are two names on the list. So if they'd like to come up, thank you very much. That would be great. Thank you.
Shaun Blue, 48 Spruce Street. I have coached with Rob O'Dong for 17 years, seven at Mansfield and the last 10 here at Foxborough. In all those years, I never saw Rob, not once, have an altercation with a student, wrestler or parent. It seems a little extreme to me that Rob lost his job as a coach over one email sent by a parent demanding Rob be fired. I feel with Rob's history as a coach over the last 27 years and having no other incidents on his record, there were other measures that could have been taken by the administration. Whether it be a suspension to start the upcoming wrestling season, putting him on a probationary period, having him take coaching classes with the school or even the MIAA. So Rob has a clear understanding of the code of conduct policy. I watch these meetings from time to time when there is a big issue in the town. It's tough to tell how many people in the room are for or against a certain issue. So I'd like to ask anyone in this room that is here in support of Rob and against his firing, please raise your hand. Now, I would like to ask anyone who is against Rob and in favor of his firing, please raise your hand. The overwhelming majority in here is for support of Rob. And that is just a small fraction of the people in this town who support Rob and disagree with the administration's decision to fire Rob. I'd like to ask the school committee and the administration to reconsider Rob's firing as he is a great coach, a great mentor to the students of Foxborough, a great person and a tremendous asset to the town of Foxborough. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Shaun. Appreciate everybody coming here and thanks for letting me speak again. I'd like to publicly apologize for writing a personal email that included the first name of a former student. The name was mentioned out of concern, however, I was not aware that that was a violation of school policy. Had I known that it was, I would have never written the email and none of this would have happened. I'd like to work together with the administration to make some positive changes by bringing awareness and more education to current and future coaches and volunteers to avoid this happening again. When I worked, coached at Sharon, the guys who ended up coaching the team after I left, they were kids that I had coached. When I coached at Mansfield, the kids that ended up coaching after I left, they were people that I coached. So I think there is a, you know, there's a decent chance that the person who takes my job will be somebody who I've coached. And I would like them to have better training of what they can and can't do so this doesn't happen to them. I ask for reconsider, I ask you to reconsider the decision to terminate me as a coach. If we look into this matter a little bit more, maybe we could decide on a two-week suspension or even, like, I don't believe I'm even saying this, but a one-year suspension. I don't know if my suspension is a lifetime suspension from coaching wrestling for putting a person's name into an email. What I'm really asking for is I just want to go back to being an unpaid volunteer assistant, assistant coach, which I've done for most of my coaching career. So thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
You guys are all welcome to stay. We have a lot of business to get to, but thank you very much. We are going to move on now to the open, I'm sorry, to the approval of minutes. So we do have a set of minutes in here from the May 28 meeting. Just give people a second to come out. So the minutes are from May 28.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 28, 2024 regular school committee meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes from May 28, 2024? And?
Against.
Any against? No. And any abstains? And that would be neat. Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. So we are going to move right along to the Plan for Success.
All right. We are in year, finishing year three of our four-year plan for the Plan for Success. If you think back to September, we came forward with our goals for the 23-24 school year and framed those and what it would look like for all of the strategic objectives within the four pillars. And this is a time where if we're doing our job correctly, none of this is really going to be a surprise to you because you've seen things throughout the school year, whether through a teaching and learning highlight or through an actual agenda item or through one of my updates of what's taking place in order to meet many of the strategic objectives within each of these pillars. So what we wanted to do this evening was to go through each of them and highlight to kind of remind you of some of the things that you've been very much aware of during the year. But I think one of the biggest pieces to point out here is this school year was the first one out of the plan so far where we've tackled each of those strategic objectives under each of the pillars. So you see kind of boxed and read there that under each of them, they have been addressed in some way this school year and some of them have been completed in past years or have been in progress or continued on. So when we move to the first pillar, facilities and infrastructure, another piece to point out is a reminder for anyone, because this is all available right on the website, the action plans and each of these reports each year, that I think that's particularly helpful is when we define certain words or thoughts in the beginning of each of these pillars, what we're talking about here. So you have the objective, you have our initiatives, and then you also have kind of a narrative of what the overall picture here is. So under facilities and infrastructure, in that last column, which you have all of this in your packet, we thought we would just kind of go through and highlight some of these particular top-level items is safe arrival as an example. So in that top left-hand corner, you have a, it's just one of the charts, when we look at having the app or people to call in their students if they're going to be absent. So we've talked a lot about safe arrival. It's a way for parents to do this very quickly from their phone. And you can see just from this chart there that we're having a great percentage of people calling in absences prior, which is really good. So as that example shows, you have 68% that absences are reported before school, then you've got the explanations. And so the remaining unexplained there is 22%. So when we're talking about, we're looking at data, we're looking at attendance, and attendance has been a really big focus across Massachusetts and then obviously here as well. So we're looking at those data points to say, okay, who are the ones that are unexplained or what are the reasons behind it? So that has been working really well with safe arrival this year. The other images that you have there in the center, the man trap and having that from a facility standpoint at the IGO, and then we also had that take place at the Ahearn. Bill, if you want to chime in a little bit there on those two upgrades.
Yeah, I mean, the proper way to do things now is obviously allow people into an area where you can still control and see. Obviously, when we built the borough, that design was there. It was always a weakness at the high school that we were concerned about. So we were able to obviously create that so when you come in, you actually get inside the building, you're into an area that is all school guard safety glass, which basically means you can't shoot through it, you can't, you know, break through it. You could spend a lot of time trying, but by then hopefully the police would be there. And you basically get buzzed in by the control, which is in most cases, the, you know, attending secretary that's there. Again, they're protected by the same equipment as far as, you know, school guard safety glass and so on, it's all through, you know, voice communication. We did the exact same thing at the IGO, which was a little bit more challenging because obviously an older building and smaller constraints, but we were able to expand it so that we did not only that front small entranceway, but all the doors and access points into the office itself because of the tightness, which worked well. So the borough, you know, has it the Ahearn. We did the same thing where it had the secondary door system, but it didn't have it under the school guard safety glass. So we added that feature. So really, we're 100% with those four buildings. It would be part of the Taylor complex, you know, obviously when we go through that design as well. So right now, the Taylor does have protection through its main doors and stuff, but it doesn't have that same secondary system. So we halt the person outside the building before we allow them in, which doesn't give you quite the same visual, but with the camera systems we have, it's pretty good.
And then obviously, in addition to hardening access to our buildings, just our partnership, we know, with public safety, all of our drills to the point to where I don't know many districts, in my conversations anyway, that go to the point of the evacuation drills like we do in the fall where we take kids off-site to go through that piece, which is really an important part of those drills. Just those pictures there, you can remember back in the fall, having public safety there and then having Christina, who's the social worker on the public safety side, that's been a nice addition, I know, for public safety, but then the connection with the schools as well and having that partnership, whether it's working with our students through programs that we have at the high school, that they're physically there with a table and talking one-on-one with students, or just where they're active in schools and the partnership through our trainings like with Synergy 911, where we continue to have those trainings every single year. So anyone that's new has that training as well. The other part of this particular pillar was really looking at our infrastructure and our technology access for students and identifying priorities and redesigning kind of our technology plan there because of looking at the ESR funds that were used when we went one-to-one before we were bring your own device, as you know, and the amount of money that was spent. And we've talked a lot here from a budget standpoint of being able to sustain that and what are we prioritizing and what do we need to do in order to be able to move forward from a technology standpoint.
Yeah, so and on that, one of the biggest things that we've completed this year was upgrade to all of the access points to the newest technology. The older technology basically had more interference. We had pretty damn good coverage throughout the buildings, but this gives us the next level, plus it gives us, you know, the ability to do with additional channels to degrade the noise basically between classrooms and its access. We also, you know, did, you know, some additional, we came up with a plan with the computer rollouts for going forward. Basically, what we'll be doing is upgrading the fifth grade with all brand-new computers and the ninth grade with all brand-new computers. And we're also in the process right now of, major problem we've had is with the short throw projectors that, you know, basically they're end of life. So as they're going now, it's not even that you can get parts or even replacement units for them. So we're really looking at replacing with, you know, the 83-inch large projection units where it's more like, it looks like more like a TV, flat-screen TV type of thing, which actually ironically now is the same price as what the short throw projectors were. So when they first came out, you know, $18,000, $20,000 and now you're down into the $3,000, $4,000 range. So that's going to take a while to roll out over time and to see how, you know, the curriculum works with them because again, it's not a whiteboard. So we have to be very thoughtful of how they're, you know, used, but it does definitely give, especially in the high school, can give certain areas like the sciences and the maths, a much better product to work with moving forward. So those are kind of the major technology sides. You know, as far as buildings, obviously, we've just continued to look at every aspect of, whether it's additional cameras in areas. I will say it is interesting even when the person who went missing the other day, the first thing the cops asked us to do was to look at our cameras because our cameras can reach out to the streets in many places, can reach around the buildings. So we continue to make sure that those are, you know, obviously all working, but, you know, if we have some blind spots to try to improve on those as well. We've done some of that as well this year. And obviously, the big stuff, we continue to look at servers and switchgear and stuff like that to just keep it in an operational basis that just makes it as strong and supportive as it can be.
One of the things that stood, that I circled when I was reading this earlier is the shift at the, is the shift to a mobile learning environment. And I'm hoping that we see more than just the replacement of desktops and with laptops, but a true mobile learning environment and what that allows us to do from an educational standpoint. I didn't, it might be in here and I just might have missed it a little bit later on, but I think that's a really exciting opportunity for us.
We actually don't have very many desktop units anymore.
Right.
The only desktop units we have, for the most part, are teacher units that are connected to the projectors just so that we're not moving, you know, at this point laptops and to each classroom and having to reconnect all the time, although we are working on that technology as well so that we don't have to have the desktop. So I think the basis here is to look thoughtfully at the way the curriculum works. I think we've discussed before that, you know, on the elementary level, no need for laptops to go home, no need technically to have one-to-one in every single classroom, but to have the access to one-to-one when the teachers want to do it. So, you know, we've learned a lot through this process, I think. And even though we were very, you know, I want to say thoughtful on how we approached the, you know, one-to-one environment originally, we still find that there were things that we did that we didn't really need to do over time. So that's what we're adjusting as well. So, you know, the elementary level will have the technology available to it when teachers want to use it, but they tend to do more stuff outside of that environment, which they should with that age child. The middle school and high school will tend to be obviously more into that and it's even more into it on the high school level because obviously that's their, where they're going to end up going when they go to college and stuff. So I think it's learning the progression of how the curriculum has to work around the technology or with the technology, not that the technology is what's driving it.
Right. And so what we see a lot happen when any organization goes mobile is the laptop just becomes the same as the desktop, right? So it's just a different looking, but it's the same machine. It never gets moved, it never gets taken, it never creates a different paradigm for how you're working, whether it's in, you know, a classroom or whether it's in an office. What I'm hoping to see as this continues to evolve is we do more to change the paradigm of how the learning happens because that's what we see in all the other pieces of this, right? But I didn't see the technology specifically called out in that way. And I might have just missed it. It's probably in there, it's probably in your thoughts and just not here on the paper, but I'm excited about that. That was my only...
I do believe when you take a look through the tech plan that you have in your packets, you can see a little bit of that. Keep in mind that the interactive displays that we're replacing in the short throw projectors with those interactive displays, we can only replace about 8% per year, so that process will be slow-moving. However, those interactive displays come with the ability for you to screencast and for teachers to move those devices around the room. So we're not just replicating or swapping out equipment. We are innovative, innovating our learning environment. And much of what you see in that plan, I think you can see pieces of that pulled from the technology curriculum review that we did this past year. Some of the goals coming out of that review align very well with some of the upgrades and the decisions that we made to be able to create that sustainable instructional technology environment that still allows us to innovate. So you'll see, there's, this is just one example of some of the things that our digital learning coaches are doing. Coming out of the technology review, it wasn't just the recommendation of coming up with that multi-year plan that would allow us to replace our equipment and upgrade our commitment, our equipment to something more innovative. We're also working and coupling all of that work with an emphasis on digital learning pedagogy, as we called it last year in that technology review, to make sure that whatever improvements we are making, yes, they are cost-effective, but they're also in line with what the research says for what a digital learning environment should look like over the course of the next few years.
I knew you would have it covered, so thank you.
So the teaching, learning and pedagogy pillar, you'll notice a lot of what is in this pillar is attached to our participation in the DESI MTSS Inclusive Instruction Academy. You do have an included in your packets, a document that memorializes a lot of that work that we're really proud of. I would like to say thank you especially to Corey Michaelazek, our Director of Student Services, our Curriculum Directors, Noel Hendrickson and Karen McKinnon, that really helped spearhead that work. We had a team of literacy specialists, math specialists, K-12 educators, department heads, curriculum directors that pieced together this inclusive practices playbook. And what it does is really capture, how do we define multi-tiered systems of support? How do we define universal design for learning and how do we define co-teaching in our learning environment in Foxborough? And what are some of those practices that we want to memorialize and ensure that when we're leaving that academy, much, many of our buildings are near three of three. So as we exit that academy, what are the practices that we want to sustain over time, over the next few years? And it's really a wonderful document. There are a lot of live links within that document too, so it's a great resource for our staff. We're really excited about putting that together.
And wasn't there also the request from the Department of Ed to be able to take that and to put it on their site?
Yes. It could eventually be featured on Massachusetts Tools for Schools. I've not seen it go live yet, but it is a wonderful document and a testament to the staff that we have here in Foxborough and how hardworking they are with the inclusive instruction work over the course of the past few years.
One of the areas that really crosses between pillar two and pillar three with the teaching, learning and pedagogy and the wellbeing is when we look at all of the work and the focus emphasis on social emotional learning. And you see that from the very beginning of the school year when we started off the year, really hearing from our students at the end of last year when we did focus groups and their voices came through loud and clear in the workshops that we started in August with teachers. And that work really was the driving force for us throughout the school year. And one example in that top right-hand corner that you see is a panel discussion with some of our outside consultants. You see Mr. Michaelazek and Dr. Burrows there on the left. And it really is kudos to the two of them and the work with the mental health teams, the SEL Committee and the Professional Development Committee. And seeing how all of those intersect in the work that we're doing and how it really makes a difference as far as the workshops that are provided. We had a lot of people asking for choice, but choice within what our initiatives were. And they had a lot of choice, whether it was looking at social emotional learning and what it looked like as early as preschool. That bottom left-hand corner that you see there is Amy Muldowney, who's leading a workshop with our preschool staff and really saying, well, how does this play out with our three- and four-year-olds? And so that way you have that vertical articulation and alignment all the way up through high school. And that focus is something you could see on every one of our PD days. You could see it through our parent academies that were taking place throughout the school year, as well as just different workshops and opportunities that were shared with teachers throughout the school year. That bottom right-hand corner is Dr. Pat Tutwiler. He is the Secretary of Education for Massachusetts. That was a visit we hosted when he came to the Ahearn. He came there on Teacher Appreciation Week to represent our, the state and to thank our teachers and all the work that they do every day, but at the same time provide an opportunity for us to share as district and school leaders, what are the things that we're grappling with in schools? What does it look like particularly from a social emotional learning standpoint and what teachers are encountering in classrooms when we look at being a trauma-informed school district at the same time as what they do every single day with our students? This is another example, I think, that shows our voice in Foxborough is reaching at the state level. That top left-hand corner picture there is Commissioner Riley. For the, he's longer, he stepped down in March as far as being the Commissioner of Education. And that is our building district leadership that's there, as well as some of our other folks there. You can see Paul Feeney that's there, bringing in state leaders to come in to talk about in this case, the state of education, but particularly when we think about the migrant crisis in Massachusetts and having our newcomers and what we were doing. They asked to come to Foxborough because of the work that we were doing and to be able to hear from us, the successes and then also where the challenges are. So that was an opportunity for, again, for our voice in Foxborough to be at the state level. Some of the other pictures that you see here really are an outcome of our English Language Arts Curriculum Review. That bottom left-hand corner where you see Mr. Worth, as well as myself there with some kindergartners, those are the books, the G.O.D. books, which are high-interest level, at their reading level textbooks. And the engagement is really just outstanding. And it's a lot of fun just to be with the kids there. But again, it's showing the work that comes out of the committee, what you are supporting as far as from a budget standpoint and the materials and resources that teachers have. Over on the right-hand side is just an example of one of the many book studies that we had this year. And that was one that was co-led by myself and Dr. Burrows. And we had a number of teachers in our book study and that same book was in another book study over at the Taylor Elementary School and then a number of other ones that took place. So that's outside of school, that's people that are signing up for that because they want to be a part of it. It's not part of our regular professional development days. It just shows the engagement of our teachers and wanting to do more and to learn more and to work with their colleagues.
As you know, we have begun implementing the FastBridge Literacy Screener. We're now in year three of that screener, so we're very comfortable with the data that comes out of that and using that data to inform our practice. You see in that bottom left-hand corner, that is over at the Taylor. Principal Stanton is leading a data meeting to help a grade-level team identify what are the next steps in that data now that we have that screener information in front of us. That's a common practice. It's happening across all three of our elementary schools that we're having those consistent data meetings. They're happening during our PLCs. They're happening in separate data meetings right after a literacy screener is administered. And we're already seeing that if you think back to our MCAS presentation at the very beginning of the year, that baseline and benchmarks presentation, where we were seeing rapid growth in the area of English Language Arts for our students. So that screener is working well for us and it's a great practice. So that screener is working well for us, and it's a great practice, really looking at the data and having thoughtful conversations.
If you, I can wait to the end, but I do have a couple of comments on this particular pillar.
Sure.
So, one, overall, I should have said this at the beginning. My favorite part about, not about the presentation, but about the document that was shared as part of the packet, is certainly the Evidence of Change Benchmark. And there are a couple of things that stood out to me as I was reading through this. And the first one, it was in this section, it was the 2.1, and so the launch initial MTSS systems district-wide with targeted professional development, and the Evidence of Change Benchmark of a decrease of at least 2% in the special education population. Those kind of numbers are really important because I know we talk about data, and you guys always present data to us, but when we can see that in action like this, it really brings it home for everybody that there is change happening. And it's positive change, and it's translating to student success, right? The next one, it's not about the benchmark, but the next question I had is on the Common Curriculum Mapping Library. I know that's supposed to be up and running by August, right? Yeah, for August. And somebody's going to love and maintain that thing with attention and...
I am already loving and maintaining that. So one of the things that we did, and I failed to mention, so I'm thankful for your question, we launched a curriculum leadership team this year. That team met three times throughout this school year. Part of the work of that team was identifying that Common Curriculum Map. And then with our department heads and our curriculum directors, we've been working on memorializing our curriculum in those common maps in order to prepare for not just our NIASK visit, but also increased transparency. So that does have a designated spot on the district website. I have been working to get that ready to launch, and my hope is that by August, we'll have enough of those mappings developed where we can launch that site. We have made significant progress in that. I am incredibly impressed with how hard our department heads and curriculum directors have worked at getting that live. We've made a lot more progress than I had anticipated at this point, so I'm hopeful that August, you will see a launch.
I'm excited, and if naming rights are still open for that, I do know a soon-to-be-retired business administrator that I've been looking to stick his name on something.
Yes, the Bill Yuchna Curriculum Library. I will make that note.
For years, years. Beats the Bill Yuchna Comfort Station, which had been my campaign before, so thank you for that. So next, so this is the one that I really geeked out on, which is the Instructional Playbook Inclusive Practices. I read it three times because I just, I loved it. But what really brought it home for me, there were two things. One is on page six, when we talk about the different tiers and what percentage of students receive interventions through Tier One support, and the number you have here is 80%, and that's for our district, right? So...
So, that's really the recommended guidance through multi-tiered systems of support. The recommendation is that 80% of our students should be receiving support through Tier One instruction. That's really, that's driven by research, so that's not a specific quantitative number from our data.
Okay. Thank you, because I read it differently, so thank you for clarifying that. I really appreciate it, because it tied into that 2% number before, and I love the synergy there, and it still does, just in a different way, so thank you.
And that is absolutely why we're seeing that decrease by 2%. That is a significant decrease, and part of that is we have focused so much over the course of the past few years on universal design for learning, which is providing more students with access to Tier One instruction, on making sure that our interventions, that our targeted interventions, are available to all students. And what that does is it does decrease the need for students to need those Tier Two or Tier Three supports, or that additional intervention that might eventually qualify them for an IEP or a 504. We're able to do that in our Tier One instruction. We're able to make sure that all kids are getting what they need, and so that 2% number is reflective of that work.
Right. No, I love it. It's super exciting, super exciting. And you tied into the last thing I circled, I think it's the last thing I circled, because I had two copies of it, is this thing on page 13. If we can find someplace, somewhere, the last paragraph on page 13, where it says, "In Foxborough, we believe all students are capable of learning when instructional methods are intentionally implemented," and that we, as teachers, so I can't say that part, "but can help all students succeed through the principles of universal design." That is an incredibly powerful statement, and I would love for us to find some way to bump that up to higher prominence somewhere in as many places as we can, because this is the heart of what we're trying to do, or what we're trying to support y'all in doing, I should say. So I actually cut and paste and sent it to a couple of other people because it got me excited to read it, so thank you. I just wanted to highlight that I love that sentence, so thank you. Okay, now we can go to Pillar Three, unless anybody else has questions? And if you haven't read this in the whole document, I highly recommend it. It's really exciting. There's more that I guess I'd add about later, but...
That wordsmithing was the authors of that section. We had a really great group working on that universal design for learning section, and they were excellent wordsmiths.
I loved it.
Yes.
And I think one of the other points, when we're talking about special education population and making sure that we intervene early to where you're not at that point, is also looking at our out-of-district numbers. And so we've seen that number continue to decrease because we've been able to bring some students back. I mean, some students were not able to because it's not appropriate, but for the programs that we are able to offer and to be able to meet their needs and to be able to have them in district, that's another piece of this.
So one of the things that you'll notice is that even included in the inclusive practices playbook, there's some social-emotional and behavioral supports that you see embedded in that. That was actually intentional to try and merge some of the items underneath Pillar Three that we're doing with social-emotional learning. Our panorama screener that helps us identify multi-tiered interventions on the social-emotional learning side of the house. Second Step and Responsive Classroom, that curriculum and that instructional strategy really does support all of our students in the classroom through UDL, through MTSS. You see a little bit of overlap there. Underneath Pillar Three this year, I think a couple of the things that were really successful, you can see in that bottom photo on the screen there. We had Dr. Englander come in and do a parent academy on anxiety and depression in teens. That's just one of many parent academies. Thank you to Amy Muldowney, our Community Wellness Coordinator, that helped coordinate those. In addition, I know that we mentioned during the Wellness Committee update, we were actually able to engage our families in the Metco program as well by streaming those parent academies this year and offering a Boston location as well. So we're really happy with that. And the other piece that you'll find some additional details in your packet, Mr. Michaelazek, myself, Amy Muldowney, our Community Wellness Coordinator, and Kim McDowell, our out-of-district Coordinator, all participated in putting together an SEL audit, which was part of our charge for this year's Plan for Success, and something that aligned well with us being year three in our MTSS Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Academy through DESI. So that was something that we had the support of our consultant through that academy to conduct that SEL audit. And you'll see on the next slide...
Before we go to the next slide, just as a reminder, when the principals were here for their school improvement plans, that's just a picture from there. So much what you heard was based on really mental health, social-emotional learning, in addition to academics.
Sure. So there are some highlights here from that internal audit on this slide, where we really worked to identify what does each tier look like when we're talking about social-emotional and behavioral supports. What you see in the bottom right-hand corner, each of our principals are at those mental health team meetings where we're breaking down panorama data, and we're identifying trends in that data, identifying what are the items that we need to tackle through Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. So it really is a coordinated effort to implement many of these programs. We also identified the curriculum and the instructional practices that we'll be using and continuing to use as our participation in that academy sunsets. And I do just want to thank Mr. Michaelazek and the rest of the team that I had mentioned. This was multiple months of work in unpacking what we're doing in terms of social-emotional supports to piece this together, and we're proud of it, and it helped us identify future work, and we're in a really great place moving forward into next year.
Are we okay to move to Pillar Four?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Pillar Four, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. If you wanted to sum all of this up, it's about belonging, and it's about making sure that we're creating access for everyone. So when we think about what's taken place, I mentioned at the beginning of the school year, we had the data from our student focus groups from all levels, elementary, middle, and high. That was the beginning of that. It kicked off the year. We took that information. Are we providing an environment that is accessible to all, where everyone feels as though they belong and that the access is there? So taking the words and the comments and the feelings from our own students, and that was really a powerful way to start the year. We also had Jane's Way, which is two women who provided professional development. Dr. Burrows, she found them as far as the beginning, but then we met with them so many different times to be able to really frame the year and what the needs were based on where we are in our journey as far as professional development and meeting the needs of what we're hearing from our own staff. So whether it's professional development through those ways, or whether it's the DEI Committee, our SEL Committee, any of those, they intersect a lot. And what we did differently this year was we combined at different points in the year. We had our Professional Development Committee meet jointly with our DEI Committee. Then we did the same thing with our DEI Committee, and we had it join and meet with our SEL Committee. And that was really powerful. And what we found, there was a little bit of overlap with some of the members, but really it was a huge group, but then we were able to see the intersections of the work that we were doing, and it just made it that much more meaningful in the work that we're doing as a district. So that was a great thing that we're going to continue to go forward in having those joint meetings with those committee members. As far as the other things that, just as reminders from here, which are wonderful reminders when we think about the expansion of Unified Sports and how much that has really put, I'll say, put Foxborough more on the map as far as the schools and what has taken place, whether it's the basketball or the Special Olympics Field Day, and expanding that as far as even having another district join us and looking at how we can expand it even further. In the past, going back a number of years ago, that was hosted by Attleboro Public Schools, and it was wonderful. And then it stopped. I don't know if it was because of the construction at the time or COVID, but really being able to have the opportunity to bring our athletes together and its share in that from district to district, we know that it is a meaningful experience for everyone that's involved. The other couple of reminders here, I think, that are important is with the new IEP from the Department of Ed, the work that Mr. Michaelazek has done and with CPAC, so much has been done in this area, and partnering with the state to be able to have workshops with parents and to have other community and districts come with us and learn about that process. Combining that with our student information system, the work that's been done there has really been an extraordinary effort by many. The picture that you see at the top, that's one of the playgrounds at the IGO, actually, and some of our newcomer students, and I just think, talking about a picture says a thousand words, just the smile that you see in our students. We really responded, I think, in an extraordinary way to, with our newcomers, with our 93 families that joined Foxborough back at the very end of August. I think it was August 27th or 28th when we got word that we were going to have so many new students join us, and the community of Foxborough, as well as our school community, really stepped up, not surprisingly, and was able to jump in and do what we needed to do to provide additional intensive supports for the students that were joining us, and to think about the supports that we needed from a staff level as well. So expanding those supports, thinking about our English learner practices already, we had one of the teaching and learning highlights, if you remember, earlier with the Six L teachers who came forward and really talked very specifically about how we're meeting the needs of students that don't have English as their first language. The other highlights as reminders, when we think about the award that was for the Ahearn, for the Special Olympics Unified Champion School, the Above and Beyond Award that they received, those were great evenings here at School Committee to have them highlighted in the work that was done, becoming an official recognition for No Place for Hate again. The other opportunities that have taken place throughout the school year, whether it's for students, you see in the bottom left-hand corner, the Free Hugs Project and the speaker that came in, that was something that was targeted for the high school, and Dr. Burrows had written the grant as far as through the Metco program in order to bring that speaker in. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, just again, the reminder of the Ruby Bridges Walk to School and what the elementary schools, what they did in order to really show how far, you know, the country has come, as well as what it looks like in a way that they can understand it at the earliest age as kindergarten, if we think back to that presentation. So many different ways to recognize the schools, the work that's being done by teachers and staff and administrators in the building, whether it's through awards like the Above and Beyond Award, or it's just every single day in the different activities that take place within a classroom, or even those bigger activities like the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. Another reminder here, when we had our web, Where Everybody Belongs, a difference here is really looking at, transitioning to middle school can be hard, we know that, and we also know that when you start as a new student in August, we have, like, as an example, all of the fifth graders that come before school starts. But we also know that what's different, this is from maybe five, 10 years ago, is we have students that join our schools all year long. So there was a great emphasis on the web leaders and working monthly for what they could do for students that were new to Foxborough and help them acclimate, whether they just moved to town or whatever their journey or story has been. So I think that that was a wonderful way to help people feel as though they belong and get acclimated very, very quickly. And then just the visuals that you see around the buildings. I mean, you see there, you know, hello, in so many different languages. We've talked about how many languages that are represented in Foxborough by our students, and when you walk around schools to be able to see, are they inviting? Are they inclusive? Does it give the feeling as though that everyone is represented? That's just one example. You see that in all five schools, and I think that that also leads a little bit to the Equity Walk tool that was developed.
Yep. So our DEI Committee has spent some time over the course of the past year piloting the Equity Walk, looking at what could this look like, what have other districts used to support equity and inclusion, the visual equity, the visibility of equity and inclusion work throughout school buildings. Our DEI Committee members all piloted this in their respective schools, and many of our principals actually piloted this with parents on school councils and talked about, you know, what are we seeing as we're walking through the halls? Are we seeing students with disabilities depicted engaging in activities in the same way and at the same frequency as our students, as our non-disabled students? Are we seeing a representation of students of color and students from different economic backgrounds throughout our school buildings? And how can we make sure that our learning environment is visually more representative of the demographics that we have here in Foxborough? So that is a fantastic tool that our committee developed, and we intend on implementing it further in the upcoming school year.
And I think that's an example, that's a concrete example, too, that went before the multiple committees to look at it from different perspectives, whether it was the DEI Committee or whether it was the Professional Development Committee. Let's look at the tool again. Is it user-friendly? We need it to be something that's not burdensome, that people... We need it to be something that's not burdensome, that people could use, and it would actually make a difference.
And I think that's a really great point. Everything that we've accomplished this year on the DEI Committee and in previous years, it's been very iterative. We've been very thoughtful about what tools we develop and that they're user-friendly and that they make sense for us here in Foxborough. So we're not just grabbing something from another district and immediately adopting it. We're taking the time to make it work for us.
So you guys, I did have some things, Liz, but you already covered them, so I won't ask them just for the sake of talking, but thank you for covering them.
We knew that we put a lot in your packet, and having all of those different additional, whether you call them resources, and, you know, whether it's the, those different documents, there's a lot of pages there. But at the same time, we didn't want to not put them in your packet, because so much work has taken place by so many people this year. Until you really see, like, that playbook in your hand and see all of the things that, Rob, that you were talking about, you really can't appreciate the amount of work that was done.
Right.
So we appreciate you looking through it and reading it three times, because it's the fruit of our labor, right? It's a lot of work.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's a humongous lift, and you guys have done an amazing job. Thank you. Thank you for doing your best to put it into slides and bring it here for us.
Thanks. One thing, Liz, just looking forward, knowing that you have one year left, and reading the goals from the outset, you've taken huge chunks out of this. Is there anything that you're looking at in terms of for the last year that give you cause to rethink, or does it still all seem in alignment with the direction you've been heading?
I'll start and say that I think there's many things that are here that we will see that will go forward into the next plan. So next year, as we move in, one of the first questions in my mind is, this ended up being a four-year plan when it was going to be a three-year plan.
Right.
Just because of timing and coming out of COVID and all of that. So does it make sense to be a three-year plan? In the past, we had plans that were five-year plans, so that's one piece.
Right.
But when we look at the goals, many of those things are going to continue to be those overarching objectives, but the initiatives are going to morph a little bit, but some of them need to carry forward, and that's going to be the work of next year, finishing out this plan, looking at the data to support that we met the goals.
Yeah.
But then what needs to carry forward, or what just becomes what we do?
Right. No, I appreciate that, because I think, I mean, going back, what, six years maybe? I think, you know, as you came in and acclimated, being full, you know, being the superintendent, you really relooked at this thing and kind of put your own stamp on it and morphed it, and we're seeing the long arc of your labors coming to fruition. So that's nice, and it's also nice to hear that if it's worth doing and worth doing well, it will continue. And having it in the plan is great. If it's something that just becomes part of common practice and you don't want it in the plan, that's fine. Eager to see what's next, and I realize I'm looking a year ahead, but no, I just appreciate the deliberate, measured, and thoughtful, never-haphazard process you all take in moving the entire district forward. So none of these goals can happen overnight, which is why they're worthy goals. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I can't stop laughing. Sorry. Okay, okay. Thank you for all your thoughtful work. I really appreciate it. I know we all do. Thank you so much. So next, we have the tiered focus monitoring review update for Dr. Burrows.
Sure. So you have in front of you the final report from the Office of Public School Monitoring. In the memo on top of the report, you can see that there were 30 special education and civil rights regulations that we had to provide evidence for, and that were reviewed by the Office of Public School Monitoring. Out of those regulations, we do have one civil rights regulation that is partially implemented. That was really something that we decided, if you take a look at page nine, you can read through the details of that civil rights regulation and the actions that we've already taken during this current school year in order to be able to fully implement the changes underneath that regulation for the upcoming year. Again, coming out of our Plan for Success, I had mentioned with our Equity Walk that that tool was really iterative. The bias in curriculum reflection tool that we've had to create in order to be in compliance with this regulation was also an iterative process. Our DEI Committee took a look at that tool. Our curriculum leadership team took a look at that tool. We developed a draft of it, tried that out at our March PD Day with staff, took staff feedback from those conversations, and then developed a final version of that. I've already submitted our final plan for fully implementing the bias in curriculum reflection tool for the upcoming school year, and I'm waiting to hear back from the state on whether or not there are any elements to the plan that we'll need to tweak, but I'm confident that what we've submitted to the state will meet their standard. And I will say, too, that our consultant, our representative that has been working with us from the Office of Public School Monitoring is actually, was very happy with us deciding to take our time with this, because it is, it's a tool that, it's important that we don't just get it in front of teachers, that we have a plan in place where our staff can understand what are we doing with this after we work our way through the tool, what are the changes that we need to make after we've used this, and, you know, why are we doing it, and how do we do it right? So that plan is in place for the upcoming school year, and we will be in full compliance with all 30 regulations by the end of next school year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any questions?
One of the, of course. One of the things that, when I read through this, coupled with the Plan for Success review and some of the things that are going on, is, and we've talked about it before, I said it in a meeting before, as an observer, what I gather from all this is that there's a high level of engagement across the district on behalf of the educators, the administration, and all of the other pieces of the school community to make all this work, right? We're getting closer and closer to be able to meet every single child exactly where they are, in whatever way that means, right? And that's really exciting work. But what I get from all of this, you've talked, you've mentioned several times tonight, the amount of time that people put into this. And I know we'll talk about this in a minute when we talk about the mid-cycle review. One of the things that's always been really important to me is, are our teachers engaged? Are our educators engaged? Do they feel like they have agency? We talk about with, you know, getting our students agency, that was part of what we talked about tonight. And what I'm seeing from evidence here is there is a high level of engagement. There is a high level of agency, and we're creating more opportunity for agency, because when I think of being an employer of choice, what I would want as an employee is agency, right? And I'm hoping that we're creating that. It seems that we are, and I'm also hoping that the people that we are retracting and retaining in our schools are appreciating that and taking full advantage of the ability to, or the opportunity, excuse me, to have a say in what drives their success and their students' success. So it's really more of just a comment. I would love to delve a little bit more into that when we talk about the mid-cycle review. We can do that, you know, at a different point, but I just, I'm excited about that. We see evidence of it all of the time, and I think tonight is a really strong example across the board. When you gave us your alphabet soup of DEI, you could spell diesel if you wanted to flip the two letters when you said DEI SEL, but I realize that it's an R, yeah, we have to switch letters, but, and then you put the PD in there and all that stuff, so you got all the, you got the alphabet soup or Scrabble. I was trying to, how many words, how many words can I come up with those six letters? So thank you. That's really a lovely comment. Okay. I had some gummy bears before I came.
Oh, jeez.
Nobody cares, but I did, so I'm done. Thank you.
Can, Dr. Burrows? Do you mind, I'd love to check out the reflection tool, if you mind sending that along?
Sure. Happy to send it along. I apologize for not including it in the packet, but...
That's okay. That's why it's, you guys always share us with everything that we ever ask for, so thank you. No, I'd just love to see it. I appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. We're really proud of it. I think it came out great.
Nice.
And I think we're fully ready to launch it next year.
And as backstory, do you mind, just, what was the development timeline on that for you and your team?
So once it became clear that we would have to develop our own tool around December, January, the Office of Public School Monitoring, where they're really in a fantastic office, they gave us a couple of resources, examples from other states, examples from other districts within Massachusetts, what their tool has looked like.
Great.
We reviewed those resources with the DEI Committee and with the curriculum leadership team.
Sure.
And talked about what do we like about this tool, what do we not like about this tool, what are the priorities, what are some of the terms that we want to make sure that we define when we develop a tool.
Yeah.
And came up with a draft. So I'd say from December, January, to about the March PD Day, we were operating in draft form, got our first round of teacher feedback, met again, as both committees met again, looked at the teacher feedback, talked about what we want to tweak, and actually at the June Curriculum Leadership Team meeting is when we finalized, this is the tool that we're moving forward with, and this is what we need to explain when we are rolling that out to staff next year. So it took about six months.
Well, that's actually, that's, it sounds fast, but, I mean, I know your committees work hard for you. And then what's rollout faculty look like?
So we did...
In terms of, I know you, I mean, you're months off. I'm just curious what you're thinking.
Sure. We made the decision, and the DEI Committee was also a part of that conversation as well, we made the decision that it made more sense to roll out the tool in individual contents, because, for example, when a math or a science teacher is taking a look at bias in curriculum, they're not necessarily taking a look at that curriculum in the same way that an English teacher might be looking at the entirety of a textbook, or a history teacher might be looking at the Civil War. So given that our English and our social studies teachers will require a little bit more time and require more time to use that tool in more depth, it felt more appropriate to have our curriculum leaders or department heads and our curriculum directors support teachers in the use of that tool. So we've developed some common slides, and I'll be there to support and co-train our departments moving into next school year.
Lovely. It's important work, and I'm so glad you took your time with it. That's great.
And I think the other piece, too, and I know I shared this back in February after the team came in and that we had our debrief session with them, and I shared some of the commendations at that time when they said things such as, you know, there's no question that there's something special in Foxborough, and that the supports that we have for students are really cohesive. And that was really great praise, because they were meeting and talking with different people across the schools, and at the same time, even our building leaders, and saying that they were so impressed by our building leaders, and it's not just surface. They know what's happening at the granular level in their buildings. So when they're talking about how responsive we are to our student needs, that's what we're here for. And I think those are the comments that you don't necessarily see when we're talking about this one tool, but those debrief and what we hear is those commendations are really important for us to hear, because it validates what our teachers and staff are doing every day.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments?
No, good. Thanks.
Okay. All right. We're going to move along to Mr. Yukna, and we are going to vote on this for prepaid special education out of district tuition.
Yes, as you know, this started right around the time of COVID, when we had some additional funding due to, you know, grants that were given to us to move forward. It is, instead of what some districts have done, which is a stabilization fund for out-of-district tuitions, this is kind of our stabilization fund, if you will, which can help you survive a major disaster. So what we have to do is, the school committee has to vote each year on the approval to prepay out-of-district tuitions up to three months for any program that we have students in. We obviously don't do it for all the students. We can't afford that kind of a thing, but we've been staying right around the $400,000 mark, you know, for those, you know, since we started the process. Obviously, it's only a one-time change if you were to go away from it, a one-time benefit, then after that, you would obviously be back in the same, you know, situation. But like I said, it is a structure which is much better than the stabilization fund, because the stabilization fund requires you to go to a town meeting vote to release it, versus this allows you to effectively reverse it in any given year if you needed to, and you could do it in a proportional. So if you only needed $100,000 of it, you could take the $100,000 by just not prepaying going forward. So as you can see, the total is $438,079.76. If you had the original one, there was a $3 mistake on the second Kennedy Day School one, so, but that's the request to allow us to prepay those tuitions for FY25.
So just to clarify, the one, I picked up a packet this morning, my dollar amount was 438076.
Right, which the, if you look at the second one in July for Kennedy Day School, it should be $14,946, not 36.
So it's 43807976.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So motion to approve the Foxborough Public School Fiscal Year '24 prepaid out-of-district tuition in the amount of $438,079.76.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? No? Motion passes at 400. Thank you so much.
Question, Madam Chair? Not about the vote?
Oh, sorry.
Remind me, Mr. Yukna, and I probably misheard it. How long, yeah, how long have you been engaging in this?
Since COVID, basically. So it's about 2020, yeah, yeah, year 2000, yeah. So about four years.
Thank you for doing it.
Now, again, the community was lucky, because we had the funding that first year to get into the cycle.
Doing it.
Otherwise, we never would have been able to do it, so.
So next on the schedule, we have Mr. Yukna to discuss the athletic trainer bid results, and we do require action on this as well.
So number of services, obviously, we go out to bid on an annual basis. This is a three-year deal that we would have with Brigham and Women's. We put it out to bid. They were the only bidders this time around. It does come with a fairly substantial price increase, although percentage-wise, however, when you look at the hourly rates, it really is less, far less than what it would cost us to have our own in-house side of things. So we're looking at a $41 an hour rate for FY25. The, you know, the option year two, option year one and two are solely that way. If we want to go back out to bid, we can. If we prefer to, just move forward. This has been a great program for us, because, A, they're responsible for the training and upkeep of the staff members on their side. They're responsible, if someone's out sick, to fill the position as we move forward. And I think most of our coaches and athletic, and students who are in athletics would agree that having this kind of capability within the building is kind of crucial, especially nowadays with so much changes. It's great when we have, you know, a number of different fields being used at the schools, and she's basically got a vehicle, and she goes from field to field as needed to deal with issues, so, but again, you know, everything is on Brigham and Women's. It's their, you know, responsibility to maintain the education and the certifications of the individual, which, as a community, that would be very hard for us to do, so.
Great.
Is there a cap on the hours? Is it capped at 1175?
We basically bid it out for 1175 hours, which we have found, basically... We have, we basically bid it out for 1175 hours, which we have found basically, over time, has, is really where it ends up being, based on the number of programs we're running. Again, it's, you know, all three seasons, and it's all, every sport that we have. So.
So that's 1175 per year?
Yes.
Okay. And are we penalized if we go over that?
No, it's the same rate.
Okay.
You know, it's just, but they have to commit to the 1175. They don't have to commit to 1300.
Okay.
As an example. But we've never had an issue with it. We have had a couple of times where we've used some additional time. And again, it's just the hourly rate.
Thank you. Motion to accept the purchase of services, athletic trainer services for the three-year contract. Do we need a dollar amount? No. Just, so a motion to accept the vendor, vendor bid for purchase of services of athletic trainer services.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Motion passes at 400. Thank you very much. Next, we are going to go back to Mr. Yukna for the year-end budget transfers.
So we used to do this a little differently. We used to try to, every time we had something come up, it would be like a monthly transaction that we'd bring in front of you. To be honest with you, if it's within a school building, let's say it's between line A and B of the expense line, those transfers really are still within that budgetary constraint. These items tend to be items that basically what we're looking for is funds that we have at the end of the year that we can deal with, these type of transfers. And it, you know, as we're monitoring the year, we look to see where potentially the offset account is going to have to come from. You know, a number of these items are, you know, items that basically will advance the, whether it's systems or, you know, you know, curriculum things. Some of them are items that basically come up, you know, whether it's a therapies line that basically needs additional support, because we're, we're running into higher expenses than we anticipated. And then the few, at the bottom part of this are items that we're saying, okay, based on the additional funding we, we do have available this year, to be able to take an advantage and, and move some, like, technology items forward that we might not be able to otherwise afford. The final one, which is the, the tennis court resealing, has been an issue for a number of years at the high school. It's one of the few sport items that we haven't been able to sponsor, to, to correct. As you can see, it's got a pretty good-sized price tag to it at 120,000. We, it's, it is gone, is out to bid as far as, you know, the cost to do it. But it is really something that we think is, is critical at this point. There are a number of areas where in the tennis courts, there's actually, you know, whole, you know, things being popping up, as well as a lot of cracks. And quite honestly, it's just not for the level of, of play. It's not appropriate at this point. So again, things that we wanted to do a few years ago, just didn't have the funding. So this year we do. The funding, as you can see, is really coming from two accounts, the out-of-district tuition account and the utilities account. We had a phenomenal year this year with the electrical side of things. Basically, partly because it wasn't as harsh a winter as we've typically had, partially because we've done a very good job with energy program savings. On top of which, we are, we, we are, part of our pricing with National Grid was, we agreed to be a, a resource that if they had to cut power, you know, we would be the ones that would cut back. And to do that, you have to prove that you can do it. So they do tests on a regular basis throughout the year. We've already had four tests this year because of that little heat wave we just had. And what we do is, we shut down the, the major, you know, components, whether it's AC or heating systems. We get the building at the right temperature, but we know how long we can sustain doing that. And that has gotten us some fairly large credits in the last couple of years. So to the point in which we've obviously budgeted for FY25 to accept those credits and know that we're going to have them. But we didn't have that in FY24. So that created some of the additional funding. But, so, we're spending about 140,000 out of the electric side of it. We had about 170,000 in savings overall this year on that line. The out-of-district tuitions, quite honestly, we always carry a couple spots, because we've been burned multiple times over the summer with move-ins.
Yep.
But the secondary thing is, we had a number of students that actually dropped down in programs, whether they went from a, a full private outside, which was a much larger high, price tag, to a BIKO program, because their progression was, you know, warranted. Or a couple who actually, during the, the year period, moved from a program back into our own schools. So those are obviously the success stories, and that's what really saves you the money. It's, it can't guarantee it's going to happen on any given year, but you hope it does. And, and really, that's what gave us our savings in the out-of-district tuition lines. We will always try to carry up one or two tuition line, you know, things, because again, it's happened to us almost every year. And this year, we just got lucky and didn't have, you know, that hit us. So.
Use it.
So I think that's, so it, you know, the total, basically, of 5746924, will cover these, all these transfers and allow us to, you know, move it forward.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No.
Does the 103 for projectors, is that above the 8% replacement rate that Dr. Burrows said would be more of the steady?
Yeah, we're a little bit higher this year, because if we do go after this the way we were hoping to on the high school level, there's a higher need to be able to do entire programs at one shot. So we can't just do a, a math class. We have.
No, you got to do math.
All the math. So.
Yeah, that's.
Lottery.
That's a kindness.
No, I don't think our staff would appreciate that too much. So, so we're very thoughtful on how we, we try to do at program level when we're doing a major change like that. After that, it gets a little easier, because then it really can be based on, like, within any one of the curriculum levels, that there's a specific teacher or, or group that really wants to, to try it. But the first ones, obviously, will be the bigger ones that, that tend, they can really take advantage of it. So it is higher.
Thank you. And is there a, what's a rough lifespan on our tennis court ceiling?
Oh, quite, we haven't touched that tennis court since I've been here. So that's 12 years. So I would say, you know, if you do it right, that's the lifespan. We're not looking to, to resurface it. We're looking to, basically, there's a, a specific crack sealing process on these type of courts, which is much different than you'd do like on a driveway.
Right.
Repair those areas where it's being raised up. And then they, they totally resurface and reseal and repaint the, the tennis courts. But again, you know, it's, it's been a complaint issue for a number of years. We've tried to address the athletic, you know, facilities with the weight rooms and stuff. Over time, we, you know, we've, we've tried to do everything over, over a period of time. But this was kind of a, a bigger ticket, and we didn't really have the funding to do it. So this time, we do, and.
Great.
Fantastic.
Push it through.
And I remember too, Bill and I both received letters back in August from some community members about, about the tennis courts too, and the need, it's, it's been there.
Yeah, like all, all of our things. I want, the one thing that's different with the tennis courts than most of our facilities, is that there is a large contingency of, of residents that use them as well. So while our kids use them, you know, immediately after school, you can go there any night, and, and those tennis courts are fully used. So, you know, I think that the community gets something out of it, as well as the schools get something out of it. So.
Win-win, for sure.
The tennis courts could definitely use a touch-up. I can watch for that.
Yeah, you can.
I could, I could feel Nate wanting to make a comment.
It's time.
So, looking at this, you want us to?
Just a motion to approve the transfer.
And then we'll just all sign one piece?
Has listed.
Perfect. So, motion to approve the fiscal year 24 school department transfer?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Finding none. All in favor? And it's 400 that the motion passes. Thank you very much for all your work on that. Now, we have overnight travel at Foxborough High School. It's a request, and Dr. Bertos is going to tell us about that.
So I'm stepping in for Dr. Donovan on this one, because it's really straightforward. And instead of having him come out another evening, he was more than happy to do it. But I said, let, let me handle this one. And this is because you're going to be very familiar with this particular student. And this is Savina Tib, who won to be able to reckon, represent Massachusetts. And her parents are not able to go. And so Janie Goodwin, the teacher, is going to go with her when they go for this event in Philadelphia. So, because now with being a teacher that's going, it becomes an overnight travel request that needs to come through approval for you, a school committee. So we're asking for approval for this particular event, which will take place in July.
Wonderful.
Motion to approve the additional overnight travel proposal for July 2024 for a Foxborough High School student.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And the motion passes 400.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Good luck.
And I don't know if any of you saw back the high five on Channel 5 when they did that with her. It was, it was such a great clip too. So, so proud of her and excited for her to represent Massachusetts.
That's awesome. And next, the proposed changes to the Foxborough High School Student Handbook. Again, Dr. Bertos.
So these, really the vast majority of the recommendations here in this are coming out of the tiered focus monitoring regulations that we needed to change, and school council at the high school. I know Sarah, you're on school council and has already approved this. And then the other piece is athletics. And it's really about due process and having the opportunity for, whether it's a chemical health violation, or it's poor behavior, that if you had as an example, let's say you had a captain of one of the sports team in the fall, and something happened and they lost their captaincy, then it gives an opportunity for restorative meeting to be able to come forward and to have, like, your athletic director and somebody else that's there, and to talk about what could change to where, then it's not going to then stay with them going forward. And it gives them the opportunity to still maybe maintain a leadership position or something like that. And we've not had that as a possibility in the past. So really being able to have a restorative meeting is, it's, it's a nice addition to the handbook.
Awesome. Thank you.
Motion to accept the proposed handbook changes for 2425.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 400. And we're going to go on to the superintendent's evaluation. Unlike years past, this is a mid-level review, so it's information only. Dr. Bertos.
Not that you need a reminder of the process, because this is one of the important three functions of school committee, but just as the overall for anyone. The evaluation is a five-step cycle. For myself, just it is for every educator. And that begins in September with doing a self-assessment. The goals that I come forward, that you voted in September, are approved. And then how I'm going to implement action steps to be able to meet those goals, and then have a conversation midway through. That has happened in the past in February as part of that formative piece. And then the summative takes place in June. In 2019, the Department of Ed made some changes for administrators that had been in a role for three years, as, as an example, superintendent for three years. I'm in the middle of year seven now, as well if you've been in the same district for three years or more, that you could move to a two-year cycle, which we have that for teachers as well. And that means moving the formative from mid-year in February in our case, to June. So it becomes a conversation, and that conversation is really to see, well, what is progress so far? What does it look like? Are there any major departures that need to take place as far as the alignment of what the district goals are, what the goals are, for myself included. So I've got the goals here, and I'll talk about progress to date on those goals, as well as what we've had, which is unique to Foxborough, and those really reflective questions that goes back many years, even back to Debbie Spinelli. And it's something that we do with our building leadership as well. And last year, I asked the question if it was something that you wanted to continue with, and it was overwhelmingly yes, that you wanted to. So I have provided that as well. And the first of those three questions, what am I really proud of? The second, what am I working hard on and what challenges do I face? So you have a lot of information there, just to give kind of the 30,000-foot view. What am I really proud of? It's something that was already mentioned earlier this evening, and I'm really proud of how our school community supported our newcomer students that came at the end of August. When I look back to our first meeting, where I had said it's the 27th or 28th of August, and we heard that 93 families would be joining, and they would have a number of school-aged children, and what that would do for our schools was daunting at the time. And we ended up creating a town task force, which I sat on. Bill joined me at a number of those meetings, and then Jen Rosenberg as well, from the health perspective, as being the nurse leader. And we met weekly. And from the school side, when it came to enrollment, the number of people that came forward to all hands on deck, if you will, is, it was really a proud moment for what we do every day, but to see it and to be really an integral part of that. And that was meeting with our building leadership, our Director of Student Services, and saying, okay, how are we going to go about enrollment? What does this look like? What's the impact on students? And with our teachers. And our teachers, I mentioned in here, one of my, my most proud pieces of this is our teachers. And the students that they had coming in, particularly at the IGO, where we had 10 kindergarten students that came on board right away. We enrolled students beginning in the Tuesday after Labor Day, and then continued on enrolling enrollment up until the students continued to move to Foxborough. And that included having to break up our three kindergarten classrooms at the IGO and move into four classrooms. That was a lot on the teachers. It was a lot on the building leadership there and the support staff. But the way people came forward was really quite extraordinary. So I think about how we were many, many evenings over, in this case at the hotel, enrolling students, working with families directly, getting translators to come with us and to do that. And then at the same time, really having the collaboration with the National Guard and with the hotel management. It's, it's something to look back on and think, how did we do that? And our students are still with us. And what they have brought to our schools has really been something that we should all be proud of, and to see the progress that they've made in our classrooms, not just the attainment of the English language, but just the rich environment that they have really added to, talk about value add. So I'm very proud with how we welcomed families, and we were able to do so in a very quick way, and being able to hire the three additional L staff members that you saw, along with other supporting staff members. As far as what I'm working hard on, really keeping the eye on the ball, which is the, the most important part of what we're here for. And that is making sure that students are our number-one focus as we're meeting their needs academically, socially, and emotionally, and knowing that there's a lot of noise. And there's a, when I say that, I'm saying that competing forces outside, that happens everywhere. It's not just Foxborough, it's Massachusetts, it's schools in general. And really saying, okay, well, what are the barriers that we need to be able to overcome? And some of those are more specific to us, just as an example, in our own central office. We've been down two staff throughout the school year. That has been really taxing on a lot of people in the business office, and then within our central office leadership as well. So when we think about being down staff members, that impacts the rest of the five schools, because we support all of the schools. When we think about from the administrative position in my office specifically, that supports the school committee, having a transition over the course of the year, when you have someone like Janet, who was there for 10 years and retired, you're going to have a harder transition. But then when you're having to transition twice, it makes it a little bit more challenging, because there's a lot, a lot to learn and a lot to be responsible for. So we're very happy to have Jamie with us.
Thank you, Jean.
She really has done an extraordinary job, and the way she's jumped in with both feet, even breaking one foot.
Oops.
Nice.
Really, just really appreciative, Jamie, of all that you've done for the school committee and for myself and for the office as a whole. It, it really has made what's been hard much more manageable, because we need to be able to focus on teaching and learning. And if you have those things that are getting in the way, it's much better we can have other people help do the work around there. And then the other thing that I did mention, and I think it's important just to mention, and when we think about some of the, I'll call it administrivia stuff, such as public records requests and those things that come forward, we had, just by October, we had eight public records requests. That is taxing on personnel when we're a small operation of human resource people. And so that falls on myself, it falls on others, it falls on Bill, to be able to bring all that information together. And it's not just specific to Foxborough. I can tell you with MASSS, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, they were asking, even in the fall, with these that were coming to all of the districts, wanting to get an idea of how many districts were receiving these different requests, because it really, it becomes, it just gets out of hand because of the time management piece. So if you have those that are having. So if you have those that are happening with districts across the state, as well as those that might be unique to your own district, when you're down staff members and you have those other things added, that becomes something that's really important to be able to prioritize your efforts because teaching and learning is what we're here for. So I did think that it was important to say, you know, that is something that we're, and myself, are working hard on. As far as challenges, the transition to a new business manager, I know that many people, including school committee and all of our school leadership and central office leadership and many people across the district, they see this and feel it as far as transitioning. The school business manager, your chief financial officer for any district, is such a critical position. And from just the talent that we have from Bill and all that he's done for the town and continues to do, we know how blessed we've been as a district from his knowledge and the work that he's done and the care to always put students first. So transition, we have transitions. We had 50% of the leadership team that transitioned last year, and fantastic people, such as Stephanie who joined us. But transition still, they take some time for people to acclimate. So following in Bill's, you know, footsteps, that's a challenge. And I also know that we're going into negotiations as well. So when you have a changeover in a leadership position in that aspect, and you have six of your nine bargaining units that are going forward, then that just adds another layer that's there. So following the talents of Mr. Yuckna is not easy for anyone. And I also think this is his last meeting.
Yes, it is.
No, he's just gonna keep coming.
He'll be in the gallery, though.
So those are kind of a reflection on the year when I think about those three questions. When we look at the goals themselves, the formative evaluation, again, it's an opportunity for the conversation to take place and to have this dialogue with you. If the ratings from the previous summative evaluation are not changing, there's not anything that school committee has to do. Therefore, it's, you know, information at this point, and you just default back to the summative evaluation from the year before. So in years past, where you each have to write full reports, you're not in a place to do that by moving to a two-year cycle. And looking at the goals, I looked at the goals as really being one-year goals, although some of them really carried over from the years before. So I'm going to speak to the goals and the progress in a year instead of looking at it as just midway through these goals. So just as every educator, I have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, in my case, a district improvement goal, and then if there's any other goals. So when we look at the student learning goal, that is one that was continued from the previous year, and specifically, it's working effectively to implement the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, to ensure equity, access, and inclusivity for all students. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here because so much of this, we've talked about through the Plan for Success already this evening, but just some other different examples from my role in carrying out this goal and what that looks like. It looks like the different activities that we plan through our agendas, whether it's the DEI committee and looking at DESI heat maps of data and how our different student subgroups and how they're doing when we look at attendance or we look at academic achievement, any of those kinds of factors, that's how it plays out. It plays out on the agendas that I do with our leadership team. It plays out in how we do different scenarios through our leadership meetings, how we're planning the leadership retreat that kicks off the school year. So it's really setting the tone from our opening day, from my message with staff, and what that looks like throughout the course of the school year. It's also my active participation in being in some of those PLCs meetings and those data meetings and sitting in on mental health team meetings and being able to hear firsthand from our educators and what they're experiencing or the challenges with students and what we're addressing. Because if I'm not there at that level, then I don't really get to hear the voices of what matter. So being active participant in those meetings is really important for me, just as my monthly visits are, which are the structured formal ones, but every single week, I'm out in schools and I'm talking daily with our building leadership and our district leadership as well. But a lot of this you did hear under Pillar Two and Pillar Four in the Plan for Success. As far as professional practice goal, supporting the capacity of the leadership team to provide personalized and differentiated support according to their needs, depending on our building leader or our district leader, that support looks different. And it's really meeting them where they are and how I can best to be a support to them, to be their thought partner, to help them problem solve or troubleshoot any issues that they may be having, whether it's with students or whether it's with staff or whether it's with parents and how to navigate some of that. So again, being very available and visible is critical to being able to support their needs. And then also actively asking them, what else is it that they need from me? And if I am meeting their needs, or how can I better support? And take, it's important for me to be able to take that constructive feedback as well. The district improvement goal, to closely monitor and enhance the capacity of the Foxborough Public Schools to address educational equity, including student achievement, school belonging, connectiveness, and disproportionality. This is a goal that I will see that will continue into FY25. It is one that is critically important to all of the work that we do. A lot of it, again, through the Plan for Success and co-chairing those different committees or those book studies, those are concrete ways of how I carry out that goal and to be able to provide evidence of the work that I'm doing. But it's also in the presentations that we have, like the K-12 Culture and Climate Survey data, and analyzing that data and presenting that here. So a lot of the different meetings that take place over the course of the year, you have those meetings noted as evidence there, as reminders of what the presentation was or what that work looked like. And then I think that the other piece is being vocal at the state level and bringing forward the work that we're doing and the struggles and challenges that we face, whether it has to do with the migrant crisis and having a voice at the table, and whether it's a matter of, like I said before, having Commissioner Riley come and listen to our state reps here and when we met at the Ahern and all of our building leadership and district leadership, so they could hear firsthand what are our needs and how we are trying to meet our students the best that we can. And the resources from a financial standpoint that are important to make sure how those funds come into the town and what it looks like, because it's very different as an example if those funds, in this particular example with our newcomers, is through the Chapter 70 formula or whether it's coming in through a separate grant, like one of the grants, which is one of the fund codes through homeless and migrant, is a grant that I wrote, but it's just one piece. And the bigger pieces are really having our voice at the table to say, in order to best meet the needs, what that needs to look like coming into the town, specifically coming into the schools. So that money, when we're saying as a committee and the budget that we have, that this is the money coming from the state to be able to support, in this case, our newcomers, that we've been able to articulate that in a way that's important. And then I also think that it's important for me as the district leader to be involved when it comes to things such as professional development. So running a book club, having that piece. It's fun for me to be able to be there with our teachers and to have those conversations. They are so rich and engaging, but then at the same time, leading professional development workshops, if I'm co-leading with someone else, like in the one in August, Mr. Michael Lasik and I, we led our workshop together. And then in March, I co-led a workshop with having our BCBA, which is our behavior therapist, Maura, and then also with one of our elementary principals, with Danielle. And the three of us designed a workshop that really coincided with the work that we're doing under DEI. And that one was titled, Oops, I Didn't Mean That. And it really goes back to the historical origins of words and phrases. And we had such great feedback after that workshop that really caused people to think and reflect on things that we say and that we don't even realize. And it's not a matter of trying to tell people how they should talk or what they should say, but to think about the things that maybe we say and we don't even realize that might be offensive to others. So a lot of fun to plan that, but at the same time, I think that it's important for me to be able to work directly with all of our educators in a way that shows that it's all of us. It truly is all of us working together towards, you know, any of our goals district-wide. And then the last one, the other goal, which was anytime we have an other goal, it's just something, it really doesn't fit under professional practice, student learning, or improvement, but it's just something different and unique of what's taking place, and that's what this one was, which was reviewing staffing and efficiencies across all operations and departments in order to respond to the state of emergency and the migrant crisis taking place as a result of our newcomers. And a lot of that's been mentioned already, so not to reiterate that, but one thing I do want to mention here is really the partnership that we have with the YMCA and how we were able to work together to think about what are some of the needs that are not being met? What are some things that we can do for students? We know they're wonderful partners for all of our students, but this was another great example of how the Y partners with the schools to be able to meet the needs of any of our students that are in our schools.
Thank you so much. That was, that was great. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Comments, because, I mean, as and if questions arise, I'll reach out to you as any of us can and should as individual school committee members. The comment is continuing something you had touched upon earlier is the connectedness of your goals, Plan for Success, I mean, because you're leading the district. And much of what you do, and as you look at it, and you're, the second question, what you're working hard on, it should be this, right? Because you have ambitious and worthy goals that take multiple years to, to address and realize, because they are worthy and they are big things, and that we do want to do them thoughtfully and well, so it should take time. I think it's exactly what I'm looking for from a superintendent, as a school committee member, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as just a citizen, that you're working hard on steering the district in the direction that you and your team appointed, and that's where a lot of it's coming. And then inevitably, with any administrative role, any role with people, there's always this emergent stuff that you have to work with. And for you, it's been some planned staffing changes previous year and all the time you went with that, and then now really focusing in, as you always do, but with a new lens, with the newcomers in terms of staffing needs, budgeting needs, support needs, that it's exactly what I hope you'd say you've been spending your time on, because it's thoroughly appropriate. It's a mark of good leadership and something that I just feel so blessed to have you at the helm. So you take this process, like you do everything in the job, whether it's the Plan for Success, every individual meeting, every task force you're working with, you take it all so seriously and make sure that it's when and where there's opportunity, and there usually is, for things to work in concert with each other that they are. And I feel very just honored and grateful to read through these documents and just see how tightly everything meshes together. And it goes from curriculum leadership, financial leadership, to long-term strategic planning and responses to emergent, emergent things like our newcomers coming, for example. So that's all.
Are you trying to say she's a graceful pivoter? She can pivot very well.
No, I wouldn't have been able to come up with that word, but that's good.
She's an expert.
I agree with you.
Thank you very much for all the thoughtfulness that you put into this and all the detail. And you're right, none of this was new. And thank you for that, too, because that, nothing was a surprise. Everything was just what we've been talking about all along, and I appreciate that.
You're here.
Foxborough is extremely lucky to have you here.
I think what we all know, I'm trying to talk loud, Paul. I think what we all know, because we see it every year, is there are things that we can plan for, then there are things that we can't plan for.
Exactly.
That's life, right? And we have, we have a good example this year, we had examples in the past three years as well, of the things that we can plan for and the things that we did not foresee and don't know what they're going to look like when they're over or when we get them to the next point of their development or evolution. So I appreciate, as everyone else has said here, your ability to be resilient, your ability to be flexible, your ability to constantly reprioritize based on what you believe are the priorities of the district and ultimately, what are the most important things to achieve student success. What I would ask you back, we all know that it is important that you have a collaborative team supporting you. So as you said, what you ask your, you know, teachers, what can you do to help them find What are the things that, and what, and I want you to be critical, constructively critical back to us as a committee, what are the things that we can do to help you, particularly with the challenge that you're facing? And what was the second question? What are you working really hard on? Because I look particularly at the, the challenge is clear, right? I mean, we, that's not a surprise to anybody that that, that the changes in personnel and leadership create challenges for you. The one that causes me a little bit more reflection or that I want to reflect on a little bit more with you at some point is what you're working hard on, which is the being able to focus on the things that are the priorities and not some of the things that could become distractions if you allowed them to. So to give us feedback, either now at our, or at our retreat in July, because I'm springing this on you, what can we do as a school committee to do a better job in supporting you and the things that you're working hard on and the challenges that you're facing? So again, you don't have to answer that right now, but I would like to have that discussion as a committee with you because ultimately, that is our job. Our job is to make sure that you have what you need to make our school community successful. And I want, I really do want constructive criticism on that, not just, you know, everything's fine. Pick at us, please.
No, I appreciate the question. I really do. Because in order to do the work, we need the, we need the support, the collective support of the committee to be able to show the work that we're doing. So I will, I will reflect on that, and when we have the goal-setting meeting and at the retreat, share some thoughts there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. We are going to move on to the acceptance of donation. We have a donation here, Mr. Yuckna.
So we received a check for $500 from the Softball Boosters Club to pay for an assistant coach. Typical, as we've done it in the past, they, they give us the money, the coach is hired by us and processed by us, so with gratitude, hopefully you'll accept it.
I move, oh yeah, go ahead, Rob.
It's okay. Motion to accept with gratitude the donation from the Softball Booster Club to pay for the coaching stipend for Shannon Seuss.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And the motion passes for zero zero.
Much gratitude.
On the, I just want to point out, on the agenda, we finished all of our voting, and Rob, I think you had a, I think you motioned for every single one. So thank you for all your, all your wording on the motions. You swept.
Back on track with your time.
Yeah, you swept tonight. So next is community updates. Anyway, we didn't have a superintendent update. Are there any community updates you want to share?
No, I didn't do any updates just because we had so many others, but I would just say that the end of the school year was really, I will say, uneventful, right? As far as coming back on the half-day on Monday with students and all of the summer programs, we just, we've got a lot going on with kids, whether they're in camps with us, whether we have our own program. us, whether we have our own programs through ESY or whether the programs for our English learners. And just the extraordinary amount of work in order to put all that together, whether it's come through extending day, whether it comes through, you know, the Director of Student Services office or any of those. There's a lot to be able to keep those wheels still going throughout the summer. So appreciative of all of their efforts. And everyone to have a safe and, you know, good, good summer.
Yes, good reminder to watch out for little children in the streets as we're driving around town. They're all out there. The booth campers are walking around already. As a parent of a counselor, they're out there. So watch the roads, Dr. Burrows.
Just this week, we have our summer institute happening. It kicked off today. We have two courses running over at the Ahern Middle School. Many of our Foxborough staff are present for those courses on restorative practices and on supporting English learners in the classroom. So very relevant topics for us. And in one other thing that I, that I wanted to mention, thank you to all of the teachers that have volunteered for summer curriculum work, even though it's summertime and our students aren't in the buildings. Our staff are, are working hard to develop curriculum, tweak lessons, work on projects that'll help us set ourselves up for success for the next school year. So very grateful for the, for the participation and the commitment throughout the summer from all our faculty that are working on those projects.
Amazing. Mr. Yugna?
Just a thank you to all of you for the last 12 years. It is bittersweet leaving, but it is time. But again, I thank you for everything.
And we thank you for all your hard work and everything you've done for the district and for this committee. It's been a pleasure from where I sit to work with you for the last three years, but thanks for everything you've done for all the students and the families. We really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Rob, do you have anything?
No, do not.
Me? Brent? No?
Just echo the thank you. And also thank you for educating most of the adults who work on behalf of our schools as well. I learned a ton from you my first year on advisory committee and every year the advisory committee learns a ton from you and every other department in town learns a ton from you. And I'm grateful that you're still serving in some capacity, so.
Thank you. 100%.
Nothing else.
All right, with nothing else going on.
Motion to adjourn.
Now you swept the meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor? Motion adjourned.